Twenty-second meeting of the Needham Select Board. I am Mo Handel, Chair. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Select Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Matthew Borelli is accusing himself. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Matt.
I'm here, Mr. Chair. I'll be recusing myself for the next.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see behind my script here. For others participating in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I'll introduce each of the speakers on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. Each board member will be asked by name for any comments, questions, or motions. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for EverSource, grant of location Central Avenue. Maureen Carroll will be presenting for EverSource. Is Ms. Carroll present?
Good evening.
Good evening, Maureen. Welcome.
Welcome.
Before you present, Kate, is everything in order for this hearing? I understand there may be a complication.
Paperwork is in order. There has been work performed before the grant of location, and I believe that the contractor is here. Sandy, is that correct?
Yes.
Christopher Woodley.
Okay, thank you. Maureen, please proceed.
Okay, my name is Maureen Carroll, and I'm here on behalf of the EverSource company. And I'm here on a petition. The petition is going to be on Central Avenue. It's going to be Westerly from Polk 8/219, approximately 606 feet north of countryway. It's a distance of about four and a half feet of conduit. This is to provide underground electric service to 1681 Central Ave.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from anybody in the public with respect to this matter? Is there anybody here from the public who has an interest in this matter? Hearing none, we come to the board. Now, are there any questions with respect to this item other than the fact that this also was work that proceeded without prior grant of location? Does anybody want to speak to that? Mr. Bullion?
Well, I'd like to hear from Mr. Woodley as to how this, how it transpired. Mr. Woodley, do you work in the town? Have you worked in the town before? Or is this the first time that you've done work in this nature? Please, you know, let us, tell us how this came about. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, I have worked in Needham before. However, I have never done an underground service in Needham before, but I have done overhead services in Needham before. I had a meeting with a gentleman from EverSource on June 26, and he and I discussed the scope of the job. And we talked about how the conduits would be run and how I was to do the job. He agreed that the way I presented the job was acceptable. I proceeded to install the conduits, run my wires through the conduits, do all my prep work. I had an inspection from Scott Chisholm. I don't have the date in front of me, but it was on 7/20 on July 20. I had a trench inspection, and he agreed that my trenching was acceptable. My conduits were acceptable. My wiring was acceptable. I talked to him at that point about the changeover date, and he said, as soon as you have that changeover date, let me know so I can be out here to make sure that everything is seamless on that date. So the homeowner, Rob DeMacy, does not have a period of time that would be not agreeable or too long to not have electricity. We like to keep things neat and tight. So he agreed that, he gave me his number, and he told me to call him and let him know when that would be. And from there, I proceeded to re-communicate with EverSource to get that date. And at that point, I was told that there was a problem with the rights, which I had absolutely, from those two meetings with EverSource and the inspector, was, I had never, was told about that. So I was frustrated. The homeowner is frustrated. We would really like to get this completed. It's a very small piece of work. But it's, you know, it's, it's been frustrating for us. So we just kind of just want to get it done.
And now, Mr. Woodley, irrespective of what happens tonight, you do understand that if you're doing work again in Needham, you have to get the grant of location.
I understand that moving forward. I wish someone had, one of the two meetings that I had had, had someone told me that I would have gone through those motions. I, I do everything by the book. So this isn't a situation I've ran into in other towns.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the board like to speak to this? I know Katie King has some knowledge of the process from a staff perspective and may have something to add as well before we. Anybody from the board have any further to add? Katie, do you want to? Go ahead, Dan. I'm sorry, Katie.
Well, just, just to, yeah, and I think that this is, this is a problem that we'd had sometimes in the past, and then it seemed to be largely under control. And I mean, with different contractors wanting to put, who were, whose plans involved putting in underground connections. I think that something about the COVID environment has broken down some of the communication here because the contractors are supposed to be on absolute notice. They can't do the work until they have the permit. And the reason, although it may seem like a technicality, is the, unlike the overhead connection, the underground connection involves an easement in real estate, which belongs to the public. And we're not supposed to approve that without a public hearing. And usually, those are like this. There's nobody here to complain or who's aggrieved or has any particular interest or care other than the homeowner and the utility. But sometimes, the proposal involves putting it somewhere where a neighbor doesn't want it or where it might cause some other problem. We've, those people all have a right to be notified and be heard. And if there's a problem, exactly what you're saying is we do not want to have a situation where a homeowner does not have a certificate of occupancy because a stitch was missed in this process. So if you're going underground, you've got to, you've got to go through the project, probably the, the process of scheduling this hearing and getting this approval before you do the work. That's it.
Thanks, Dan. Katie, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Just to comment that we've heard, we have heard the frustrations all around. So next week, I'll be meeting with staff from the Building Department and from Public Works to talk through all the various entry points where this might come in and how things are falling through the cracks and improve our communication and our processes. So we'll circle back.
Okay, and is there any impediment for us moving forward on this particular request for grant of application? Then, hearing none, I would call for a motion. Mr. Bullion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately four and a half feet of conduit in Central Avenue. This work is necessary to provide underground electric service to 1681 Central Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Bullion. Is there a second? Ms. Cooley, seconds?
Yes.
That brings us to the vote. Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The application for a grant of location is granted. Thank you very much, Mr. Woodley.
Thank you.
Lots of luck, and hopefully, this won't happen again. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Pleasure. We can now bring back Mr. Borelli into the meeting. Welcome back, Matt.
Nice to be back.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing for an uncontrollable dog. We are going to be recommending that the hearing be postponed as the dog in question is gravely ill. So I would ask for a motion to have this meeting continued until October 27 due to the current health of the animal.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to continue the hearing through October 27, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. The hearing is continued until October 27. That brings us to the introduction of our new Economic Development Manager, and I'd like to give the floor over to Katie King, Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very pleased to introduce Amy Haelson, who just got moved over as our new Economic Development Manager. Amy's going to be coordinating the town's overall economic development strategy. She's staffing the Council of Economic Advisers and is liaising with our business community. Before Amy joined the team, she was the Executive Director for the last 13 years of Dedham Square Circle, which is the nonprofit organization that was central to the revitalization of Dedham's downtown. And in that role, she also planned a number of annual community events and advocated for small businesses. Amy's been on board for about a month now. She's brought a lot of energy and a ton of ideas, and it's been really great to work with her already. And so please welcome her to the team. And, Mr. Chair, if she could say a few words about what she's been working on.
Absolutely. Thank you, Katie. Amy Haelson, please feel free to take the floor.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to meet you all virtually and introduce myself. So as Katie mentioned, I've been on board for a month now. I have to say, I have been extremely impressed with the professionalism and just the organization and the thinking outside the box of the entire staff in Town Manager's Office as well as in many other departments. So I knew I was joining a top-rate team, and I've been even more pleasantly surprised by things I'm learning every day. So things I've been spending my time on over the last month. Well, I've been sort of taking to the street and walking in socially distanced to introduce myself to small businesses in Needham Center and the Hershey area. Needham Heights is next on my list. But I've met with over 20 local businesses thus far. And more than anything, just sort of checking in to see how they're doing amidst, you know, the most challenging economic time that most of them have ever seen. And they do appreciate the efforts from the town. The restaurants are very appreciative of the outdoor dining. We talked about everything from the metered parking to what the town can be doing as the weather starts to turn cooler and throwing around some creative ideas as well. I've also been joining in several meetings with the Newton Needham Chamber of Commerce with regard to their 100-day challenge campaign, which kicked off September 15. So it's a new marketing initiative designed to support and promote the town's dozens of businesses and restaurants during the final days of 2020. So the campaign is actually collaborative between the Newton Needham Regional Chambers, Business Alliance Committee, the Needham Business Alliance Committee, rather, the town, local businesses, civic leaders, and community members. So it was developed actually pro bono by Track Tech Partners, a Needham-based digital marketing agency, which just donated countless hours to put together with their team some really creative ideas to help emphasize how important it is to support the small businesses. So not only just that they're important for our local economy, but they're safe and enjoyable experiences as well. So campaign promotions will include social media posts. There's already some street poll banners that you have seen that tie in with the campaign. There'll be signage, local news coverage. There'll be some retail promotions, perhaps a scavenger hunt, contests, and prizes, and a proposed traveling mural. More on that to come because there is some discussion about having it travel around to different areas of town, potentially on publicly owned land. So certainly, we'd be coming back for the proper approval from the Select Board for that. And there's a lot of information being shared and excitement amongst the business owners and in, on social media. So it's a great way, I think, to remind people how important it is to support the businesses that actually support our community, the PTOs, the schools, the local sports teams. So, you know, hats off to the, the chamber for their efforts in focusing on Needham and the small businesses. And then we held our first CEA meeting two weeks ago, which was great. Gotten up to speed on that. And tomorrow, I'm actually joining a sort of informal group of economic development directors from about 20 different cities and towns from the greater Boston area. We're going to be meeting every two weeks to talk about what other towns and cities are doing to share best practices and ideas. And rather than reinventing the wheel, if somebody's got a great idea going on in another town, let's, let's borrow those ideas and bring them to Needham. So needless to say, things have been busy. It's, it's an exciting time to join, also a very challenging time as, as we hear firsthand from the small businesses how difficult things have been, and they're gearing up for, you know, tough times ahead. But so far, everything is going very well, and I'm glad to be here.
Well, we're very glad to have you, Amy. I'll recognize John Bullion.
Hi, Amy, and welcome, welcome to Needham. And I like what you did in Dedham Square.
Thank you.
I, my wife and I, our oldest son lives in Dedham, and so Dedham seems to be a meeting place for us in addition to Needham. One of the things that I would ask you to also put on your radar is the Highland Ave Corridor that goes from Webster down to the Newton Line. That area, not only are there a number of restaurants, of which one recently closed permanently.
Yes.
But that area is about to undergo the MassDOT Corridor Project.
Yes.
Which will further challenge those small businesses, some of which are restaurants, that are trying to stay in business for the next six to nine months as this pandemic continues through the winter months, which I think is going to be very difficult. And then throw in a major construction project that's going to cause traffic to not want to go into that area. So I would ask you to, and I know many of the businesses, I'm sure all of us on the board know many of the businesses down there, again, that you, you know, take a look there, meet with those people.
Absolutely.
See how we can navigate not only what's going on with the pandemic for those businesses, but also is there a way of understa, better understanding and communicating MassDOT's schedule as to how it will impact those, those businesses?
Absolutely.
Look forward to speaking further with you, and thank you.
Absolutely.
Matt, do you want to say anything?
I do. Welcome. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
And yes, I've also heard terrific things about Dedham, and you can also see what you do with Dedham. So thank you for joining us. You know, as you said, you're the eyes and ears of the community, and I like the idea of you going around all these places and seeing how they've been impacted throughout this pandemic. And I know on the board, we try to be creative as far as the outdoor dining for the restaurants, the license fees, et cetera. But it's clear much more can be done, and it's nice that you're collaborating with other towns. To me, the creativity is really going to help in some things we haven't thought of and other people have thought of. Can we hear those ideas? Because, as you know, these businesses are struggling, and how we can help, how we can help. So look forward to speaking with you, and again, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Matt. Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes, welcome, Amy. I am excited to be working with you, and we are, as I think you know, getting ready again tomorrow morning to gather our group on the restaurants and the businesses again together to talk about what can we do, really, to support these 100 days and thinking ahead through the winter because we are hoping to bring everybody along with us.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your partnership.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. Dan?
Welcome aboard. Good to have you here.
Thanks.
And it's not an easy time, as we all know, but it's great to have you here and working with the businesses at this point because this has been said, it's difficult, and we're going to try to make it better.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And finally, Amy, I've had the chance to see you in action, and you've already established a very credible presence in our community and with others that we work with, for example, on the Chamber of Commerce and the business, businesses in our downtown. So wishing you well, and I'm very grateful for you joining Needham.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to also add that on my list is to reach out to the commercial property owners of, you know, major buildings in Needham Center in the Heights to introduce myself and cultivate relationships with them so that we can, you know, get the heads up on any, you know, foreseen vacancies or any kind of challenges or, you know, new arrivals of tenants. So I think it's really important to continue to forge relationships with the commercial property owners as well.
Thank you again.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate being here.
Take care. We don't have an action item on this agenda portion. So we come next to a recognition of Rick Merson, Director of Public Works. This is a bittersweet moment for all of us, I think, because Rick has been with the town of Needham for a significant portion of its entire history. I think one, almost one-sixth of the history of Needham has been under the stewardship of Rick Merson in one way or another with respect to its infrastructure. So we, we have an evening this evening that I think I would like to give the floor over to Kate to introduce people. But the first speaker will be our state representative. So Kate, why don't you run the, the portion where we're recognizing speakers? Because you've worked longest with Rick as a member of the town staff.
With pleasure. Welcome, Rick. Are you ready?
Good evening. I got my seatbelt on.
Okay. So our first speaker is our state representative Denise Garlick.
So Denise, you're on mute. You're on mute, Denise.
I hear you. Is that better? So no, and I want to say good evening to Rick and to all the members of the board who are here. And I have a very dear friend on the board who always counsels me to be short and succinct. And I'm sorry I might disappoint him tonight. Rick, I wanted to take a moment of personal privilege before I discuss the resolution. And thank you for your extraordinary work, speaking as a resident of the town of Needham. And for every time, Rick, that my family has woken up and traveled over safe snowplowed roads, for the times that we've stopped at well-designed intersections, for all the times that we've marveled at what I call the Merson miracle of how you fill the cracks on the streets. But every time my children were on safe sidewalks. And for your vision, Rick, your commitment to clean water and the quality of our water and to energy efficiency. All of the things that people consider the quality of life in Needham, but perhaps take for granted, is actually your hard work, your leadership. And I just want to thank you for that, Rick.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
You're welcome. So I will now put on my hat as the state representative, and I am representing our legislative delegation. I have a resolution, and a resolution, I just want to let you know, is an actual piece of law. It goes, the wording goes through the legislative process. It is voted on in both chambers of the legislature, both the House and the Senate, and it becomes part of the history of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is entered into the annals of the Commonwealth. So this resolution is congratulating Rick Merson on his extraordinary life of service and commitment. And I know I've told people this before. You know there are five whereas's and two resolves. So hang in there with me because it's worth listening to. Whereas public works is the combination of physical assets, management practices, policies, and personnel to provide and sustain services essential to the welfare and quality of life for the residents and visitors of Needham. And whereas Rick Merson began his career in the Needham Department of Public Works as a co-op student from Northeastern University while earning his Bachelor of Science in Engineering and worked in the Needham Department of Public Works in various capacities, including assistant to the director, and has served as director since 1992. And whereas Rick Merson has been a leader and integral to major initiatives in Needham, including but not limited to the quote, "Go Green Expo", the Rosemary ecosystem, and the historic renovation of Central Ave and Elliott Street Bridge. And whereas Rick Merson is an integral public works, was an inaugural, excuse me, excuse me. Whereas Rick Merson was an inaugural Public Works Leadership Fellow, oversaw a significant change in modernization in the Department of Public Works and was an American Public Works Association National Top 10 Leader of the Year recipient in 2005. And received the American Public Works Association Community Involvement Award in 2007. And whereas Rick has been a devoted husband to his wife, Jan, and a loving father to his four children, Melanie, Sarah, Shay, and Mara, and so dedicated his time, talent, and skills to national, state, and community organizations, including but not limited to the Boy Scouts of America, the Rotary Club, and as a member and now chair of the Board of Directors of the United Cerebral Palsy Association of Metro Boston, which has recognized him for more than 25 years of commitment and dedication. And Rick Merson was honored by the Needham Exchange Club as the Grand Marshal of the July Fourth Parade in 2018. And whereas Rick Merson has led the Needham Department of Public Works with respect and dignity for the work and the workers, as well as empathy for the myriad of quality of life issues and concerns of all residents of all ages. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Massachusetts House of Representatives and Senate hereby join with the Needham community in paying honor and tribute to Rick Merson on his retirement after 48 years of exceptional service to the town of Needham. And be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be forwarded to the Clerk of the House of Representatives in the Senate and to Rick Merson and to the town of Needham. It is signed by Robert DeLeo, the Speaker of the House, Karen Spilka, the Senate President, by Mike Rush and Becca Roche, our state senators, and with my greatest respect and admiration, Denise Garlick, your state representative.
Thank you. I'm very honored to receive that resolution.
Chair, our next speaker is our town moderator, Michael Fee. Michael, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Rick, good evening.
Good evening.
It is so great to see you. And many thanks to our Select Board and to Kate for inviting me to share a few remarks about this wonderful, wonderful career. I must say, I compliment Representative Denise Garlick on her remarks because I think perhaps you'll see that there are some common themes in the way that people think of you. And it's going to probably sound as if Denise and I collaborated on our remarks, but we did not. I assure you, this is two independent points of view with a common perception and a common judgment. So I wanted to extend to you an absolute congratulations and a heartfelt congratulations for your 48 years in Needham. By that measure, I am a mere rookie with 23 years as moderator. I'm not even halfway to what you've done for our town. But I must say, when I, when I think of you, and I've known you for many years and observed your work for many years, I do see you, I think of you as a man of devotion. I think you're, you're a man of devotion to your family. You're a man of devotion to your profession. You're a man of devotion to your staff, both your executive staff and your labor level staff. You're a man of devotion to causes that mean so much to you. And above all, tonight, we recognize you as a man of devotion to this town. I believe it is the aspiration of every man to look back after a career and to say, I believe it is the aspiration of every man to look back after a career and to say, I made things better. And I must say, Rick, you can say that with absolute confidence and incredible satisfaction. We need only look around our town and the evidence surrounds us. We have clean water and state-of-the-art facilities. We have advanced sewer and sanitation systems. We have good roads. We have parks. We have wonderful shade trees and landscape that's maintained around our town. We have efficient and admirable recycling and solid waste disposal in this town. And these are just some of your accomplishments and some of the ways in which you can take measure of your career and say, I did indeed make things better. I think you've been a wonderful ambassador for our town, both at a state and at a national level, and really quite a, quite a pillar of the public works management profession. And you have made us very proud with your state and national recognition. I must say that you leave a legacy in this town, a legacy of service, a legacy of devotion, which I've already referenced. And my hope is that others will see you as an example and will follow in your footsteps and have the same type of remarkable career that you have had. So on behalf of Town Meeting, if I may be so presumptuous, and on behalf of myself as moderator, but also going back to the days on the Finance Committee when we interacted under the prior regime, I want to congratulate you for your 48 years. I want to wish you nothing but the best. I will say that you have been a fixture at Town Meeting, and we will miss you at Town Meeting. But the invitation from the moderator, as you know, I can invite guests, is that if anytime you feel restless, please, and want some excitement, please visit us at Town Meeting, and I will assure you, you will receive a seat of honor. Best of luck, Rick, and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you. Much appreciated. I'm not sure if I'm going to be that restless four days after retirement, but maybe in the future. Thank you.
That was wonderful, Mr. Moderator. Our next speaker is Superintendent of Schools, Dan Goodekens.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and Kate, and especially good evening to Rick. And Rick, I want to, on behalf of the Needham Public Schools and all my colleagues, send to you and your family, congratulations. It's probably true that there is no one in this meeting right now that has had the opportunity as regularly as I have had over the last 15 years to speak with Rick at 3:00 in the morning. Which is a habit that Rick and I have gotten into, typically beginning in January and sometimes ending as late as April. The cause for that is to, well, to check on the weather frankly, and to decide whether or not we can have school. And the other thing about those calls and sometimes visits at 4:00 in the morning in Needham as we drive around is the fact that when you call Rick Merson at 3:00 in the morning, you get a hearty hello, which is remarkable that anyone would sound like they're speaking to somebody at noon and not be at 3:00 in the morning when they should be completely asleep. So I wanted to just share a couple of quick things, three things that come to mind when I, when I think about Rick and my, my work with Rick. First of all, he's, he's known around town for his bad jokes, his weather reports and snow removal, which I was just referencing. And if I may, I won't dwell on the bad jokes because we'll be here a long time. But they certainly, they sometimes, they always left me with a laugh. And sometimes I'd scratch my head saying, where did he come up with that? The other thing that I will remember about Rick, and I think I'm not alone on the town side, are his incredibly detailed weather reports and emails that he would send out. Even if, even if we were just expecting a sprinkle of rain, Rick could somehow turn that into a three paragraph narrative of cumulus clouds and the possibility of a tropical storm somewhere in the Atlantic Ocean. It was always a fascination to me, and I know a source of, well, some ribbing from, from some of his colleagues. The weather report, frankly, that brings me to the last piece, and that is regarding snow removal. Because Rick and I worked over the last 15 years in different capacities and different projects. But as I said, our closest collaboration was on getting the roads ready for school. And one of the things, one of the many things I've learned from Rick is I've learned a lot about snow removal equipment. You know, he would regularly throw out to me that he's got the skid steer loader and the all-wheel loader, or the backhoe loader, or the wheel loader out on the road. And I, of course, my eyes would be glazed because I had no idea what he was talking about. I just thought that you put a snowplow out on the road and you got the snow out of the way. But it turns out it's much more complicated than that, and I certainly learned a lot. Rick has always been patient with me, and I would say that what I recall mostly about Rick, and I think my colleagues feel this way too, is besides being patient, he is incredibly trustworthy. He's always been generous with his time, certainly with me. And he's one of the kindest gentlemen that I've had the privilege to work with in my career in, in the public sector and in public education. And so I, Rick, want to thank you for the bad jokes, the detailed weather reports. I still probably will out of habit call you every once in a while. And I appreciate mostly your mentoring, your collegiality, and really your friendship. I wish you well, and thanks very much for being who you are and supporting me all these many years and the community. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. It's my, it's been my pleasure over the years. And I've been notorious for, you know, not having slept ever in my entire life from a variety of sources, but indeed I do sleep. But I do make sure that I set my alarm by 3:00 to make sure I know what's going on in town. However, it's usually that I'm in town and you are in town as well, too. So the folks of Needham need to know, regardless of what we discuss, you've had your eyes on as well as mine.
Thank you, Superintendent. I will say I would expect our next speakers to also reference the weather and the bad jokes. I will turn that over to you, Chief Condon.
Yeah, thank you, Kate. And Rick, this is a great moment for you. And while Dan touched on the weather reports, I have to extrapolate a little if I might. The emails were relentless. They were long. I think he started writing some of them on the first day he was here, because some of them have taken me 48 years to read. There would be a little drizzle in the air, and Rick would say how this was reminiscent of Hurricane Alfalfa from 1825 and how if the barometric pressure drops another two degrees, squirrels will be grabbing their acorns and running for the trees. They were very informative, Rick. And we kid you about it, but it was sort of one of those deals where there would be a bad storm coming and Rick would give it a nicer spin, let's put it that way. And the puns or bad jokes I will not get into because they are bad jokes. But I truly admired your work ethic. As Dan said, you're one of the nicest colleagues I've ever worked with. One of the things I truly admired about you was your relentless effort and to get DPW Public Works recognized as public safety. And from my perspective, the DPW is a part of us and police. Whenever we need something, you guys are always there. And your people take that, that initiative of, in that honor of being a part of public safety to heart. And, and, you know, whenever we needed something, a tree moved, some snow plowed, DPW would always be there. And that's, they say a fish rots from the head, and a tasty fish starts at the head as well. So I think that what you've done for Needham is spectacular. And for your family, we wish you the best of luck. One of the difficulties I'm going to have, and that's why I'm probably getting a little bit choked up here, is when people ask me where the new fire station is, there's only a few of us, Rick, that know it's in the old Feeley Chevrolet lot.
Absolutely.
And I used to love walking down Great Plain Avenue with you at various meetings, talking about Grants or Woolworths or Gardner's or the Crest. The Crest some people know of. That's the new Packy. But in any event, Rick, I wish you, what I wish all firefighters when they retire, and that's to receive more years of retirement checks than paychecks, which after 48 years, I hope you lived that long to do that. You'll be in the Guinness Book, which will be great. And, and you'll be, you know, tapping into that retirement system, which is even better. So we're really going to miss you. And the last thing I'm going to say is Needham will not have another public servant that looks so good in a fedora like you do. So thank you.
There are not many fedoras left around. I have to go searching for them. Dennis, thank you very much. I appreciate it. There has never been an issue. Needham is a model of the collaboration of public safety and public works as first responders. It is, it is a model that I use when trying to promote around the nation how these models should be set. It's never been an issue. It's been natural in Needham.
Thank you, Chief. I almost mentioned the fedora, so I'm kind of glad I didn't do that. Okay. Chief Schlittler, you're on.
Hi, how are you, Rick?
Hello.
Hey, first of all, on behalf of the Needham Police Department, I want to congratulate you on your retirement and your dedicated and just remarkable service to the town of Needham for 48 years. It is something that you don't see a lot, and you should be pretty proud of all of your accomplishments. I think one of the things that a lot of people, some may know, but some don't, but our relationship goes back to the late 1980s when I was a summer worker for the Water and Sewer Department, and you were my boss. So I was, I got some great mentorship and some life lessons pretty early from you. And as a young kid, I think the couple of things that I observed when, when I was there is that as a boss, you were always in a good mood. You were always approachable. And I'll tell you, there were some gruff people back then that were managers or bosses, and, and that wasn't you. You were always approachable. You always, you always had kind words. Or if there was always something that we needed, we had a question, you were always there to answer it. And you, the, the knowledge that you had back then, and obviously the knowledge that you've retained through the years is remarkable. And I think you probably could start on the Needham Encyclopedia, and you could probably write it in a couple of weeks with everything you know. So, and one of the other things that, that I realized was that you were just a genuine, kind-hearted individual that really cared about your workers and your staff and the town. And that's something that hasn't changed in 20-plus years now as we work side by side. And I can always say that, as you know, Dennis mentioned, and, and obviously all the other people that have talked, that there hasn't been a time when I have called or one of my lieutenants has called you or one of your staff, and we're in desperate need of something that you haven't come through for us, and you haven't, you haven't answered the call or answered the bell for us. And that's quite remarkable because I know that there's a lot of, in different towns, there's, you know, we get along together and we work as a team, and it's not the same in many communities. And it's, and it's something that you've heard from everybody here. You've heard from the superintendent, the fire chief. The select board will probably talk to that. Our representatives have talked to that. It's remarkable. And I know Dennis touched on it. Everything that we do in town, a lot of things go through us, but they go through the DPW. And you are part of the public safety because there's a lot of things that go on where we need your help and we don't, we can't do it because we don't have the personnel. And again, we call you, whether it be the 3rd or 4th of July, the harvest fairs, all the storms. We call for your assistance, and your people are there without question, without hesitation. And they always do an unbelievable job. And that comes from the true leadership that you have displayed over the years. And it's going to be hard for you, when, hard for us when you go because it's, it's been such a smooth and great relationship. And I know there's some big shoes to fill, but we're so grateful for everything that you've do, you've done. And you've laid that foundation for the town, for all of us to, to work on, to keep building and to keep those relationships and those collaborative efforts together because we couldn't do it with, without you or, or your staff, who is, is really second to none. And that's, that's really reflection on you and the type of person you are and how much you care about not only the people that work for you, but you care for this town and the other workers in, in this town and the other departments. So again, thank you so much for everything that you've done and you've given to this town. I hope you have a long, healthy and happy retirement, and have some time to enjoy it with your family. So congrats and best of luck. And listen, if you get pulled over once in a while, give me a call. See what I can do for you.
We'll have you on the hotline. You may recall that even before your time working, you know, summers with us in the, in the Water and Sewer Division, that go back even earlier with your mom and dad and Papa on a football. So that goes back to the late 70s. So I do remember that as well, too.
My, yeah, and you know, my mom always talked about how fond she was, excuse me, of you. And, and I know she even worked at the DPW for a little bit, and she always, she always mentioned, you know, how kind you were. And that was the one name that I always heard. Yours and John Cusick were the two names that I always heard that she was just so fond of. So I appreciate that as much.
It was definitely my pleasure. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Chief. So I actually have prepared remarks as well, and I think you'll see a lot of commonality on the staff side as the moderator and our representative said on, on the legislative side. So Rick, like John said, I can't think of a time that I ever asked for your help and you weren't right there to provide it. Rick's been a mainstay of my career in the town of Needham, and I've relied on him enormously. When all else fails, Rick will know why a particular street is an ancient town way and why that matters. He can tell you where the US Army has buried the cables for the Nike missile site. And he even knows what store was on the corner of Great Plain and Chapel before the crest. The crest gets double mentioned on this call then. Rick and I have stood together for more than 30 years. We stood at parades for veterans, for astronauts, and for Olympians. We've toured the town in hurricanes and in blizzards. We've watched fire performers on the first New Year's Needham in the snow-packed streets. We consulted many in early morning about snow, so much snow. We've stood at building demolitions and bridge dedications. We stood and watched a scuba diver crawl across the bottom of the prior Rosemary Pool. We stood together at countless wakes and funerals. We stood together at budget hearings, select board meetings, and a town meeting. We've stood together at railroad crossings, intersections, bridges, schools, parks, and sewer pumping stations. To me, Rick stands for what's true and pure about public service. For 48 years, he stood up for the critical and daily needs of our residents and our businesses. He stood up for public work. He stood up for Public Works, and he made it happen. Rick, as everybody said, there's never been anybody truer as kind who's worked for the town of Needham, and we are going to miss you so much.
Thank you for those kind words.
Mr. Chair, I return the gavel to you.
Mo, you're muted. It's my best side when I'm muted. I met Rick when he was in the first third of his career here in Needham, because I had just moved into the town, and the water from Dan Matthews' house was coming down the street and filling my driveway. So in desperation, I called the DPW, and Rick came out and looked at the situation, gave me a temporary fix until he could reconfigure the curb, and he solved my problem and never made me feel anything other than welcome to town, and I'm here to help you. He's the quintessentially decent and competent public servant and a great person. Thank you very much for your service, Rick. Now I'd like to turn it over to Matt Borelli, Vice Chair, to say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Rick, thank you. You know, with all these dates, I hate to say it, you started at the DPW before I was actually born, but growing up in the town, I've heard a lot about you, my father Paul, and of course Tony Saffalo. And I really enjoyed your letter to us mentioning Tony and all the work that he collaborated on. And as you know, my father started building, I think it was 1954, in Needham. And then subdivisions were the norm in the 70s and 80s. I know he worked a lot with you on so many projects. And then I talked to him today, and I said, you know, Rick's retiring, he's now 90 years old. And he said, Rick was always someone who was fair to work with. He treated everybody with respect. He helped out so many people in town, and you heard this message all tonight. He's such a kind man. So he sends his best and his congratulations. From this seat, I've always known you to be the knowledge base for the town, as you've heard. You want to know what went on on a certain street or a certain part of town, we talked to you. Professional, hard worker, you may Needham a better place to live. I've enjoyed conversations with you. I remember going into Boston, would talk about the past. And yes, I do remember a lot of those puns and jokes, which I actually appreciate. I like.
Thank you.
I'm good with both. So what I appreciated, I think, is how you bridged that generational gap, kind of the old Needham I'd hear about, and the townies, and the things that people would do. And it was like memory lane, and it brought me back and maybe realized that Needham is still that big, small town, and I heard it tonight, and we're just all grateful. So thank you, best of luck in retirement, and I know you won't be going far, we'll be seeing you around. So thank you, Rick.
Thank you. And please remember me to your dad, and please extend to him my appreciation.
I will. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. And now the Clerk of the Board, Mary Ann Cooley.
Rick, I just want to say thank you. I think of you with a history. I think of you, and I'm grateful always for the thoroughness whenever I have a question. I wouldn't have quite characterized it the way Dennis did, but he certainly made me laugh as he talked about the hurricane in 1918. And more than that, usually that explanation always came with photos, too. So you had visited the site and made sure I had a good visual of what was going on and what your recommendation would be to have all the parts in one place. And I always appreciated everything being in one place. I'm also going to say, one of the things I remember along the way with you is a few particular ties with a message that had occasion to show up with regularity. That was always one of the other benefits. So thank you so much for everything you've done for Needham. We have been blessed to have you all these years.
Thank you. My tie collection is going to feel quite lonely for a while, I think.
You know, that's a shame. I hope you find somebody who should inherit them from you.
I'm considering how to distribute.
Thanks. Thank you, Mary Ann. Now the immediate past Chair of this board, John Bullion.
Thank you. Rick, well, okay, you know, it wouldn't be right unless I invoked some humor. And I want to call on Dr. G. to, hold on, let me, no, that's not for you, Rick. Okay, that's not for you. You know, I really think, and I'm disappointed that Rick is retiring after 48 years. So Dan, I think a good use of Rick's knowledge base would be as an adjunct professor to the Needham Public Schools. And I've jotted down some possible curriculum ideas. Snow day decision-making and analytics. You know, kids need an education other than the stuff that you teach in the schools, of which my kid's got a good education, as did all of our kids on the board. But, you know, instead of touch the trucks, how about drive the trucks? How about drive all the equipment? So there is a place for the education. And there's another good one that, does everybody, well, this is an inside joke, Jack Cogswell's bubble speech. Now, all of us that are on this screen right now remember Jack's bubble speech. But what they don't know is that Rick collaborated with Jack on the bubble speech. Dan G., that would be another curriculum idea. Exactly, exactly. So, you know, in all seriousness, Rick, you know, I and all the members of the board have known you for many years, and I want to say that we've been in a billion meetings with you. Okay, a billion. But there have been so many meetings that I have been in with you, including many neighborhood meetings, times where Rick has joined me in somebody's living room or kitchen to go over an issue that a neighborhood was having. And Rick is always there with a steady hand, steady guiding hand of the knowledge that he brings to whatever issue it was for, that we were there for. I have the greatest respect for you, Rick. I've enjoyed working with you. I hope to see you and continue speaking with you. Are you keeping your cellphone and number, by the way?
That's up to the town manager.
I think that would be a good idea. Well, if she takes it away from you, we'll figure out. I know how I'm going to connect with you. But congratulations, we're going to miss you terribly in case you haven't figured that out. Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. And it definitely is heartfelt. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Now the longest-serving member of our board, and the origin of the expression "brevity is the soul of wit," Dan Matthews.
Something like that. I think Mo is calling on me because he thinks I may remember when you were hired, but you were here before me. So it has been, you've been great in so many ways, great in small, you've done a terrific job for us. And you've left us in good shape, but you'll be missed. And at these meetings, you've been a great explainer of a lot of these issues that we work on. And I know from our fans at home that they appreciate your participation and your informative comments as well. So it's been good. One of the things, when I think of what particularly stands out to me, it's the unfailing over all of these years. And although I wasn't here when you started, I've been here for a lot of them, your unfailing good nature and kindness and courtesy to people, and remembering that this is a customer service business, and the customers are not always happy, and they can even be awfully unhappy when they don't really have a right to be unhappy. But you've always been great about it, and that's been a big part of the teamwork that you've built and the leadership that you've shown, and something that really has helped make this a good town to live and work in. So I want to thank you. I just want to say it's been great working with you, and I want to thank you and wish you all the best. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Rick. Rick, you have the final word.
Thank you. People are calling me. Can't keep my family quiet. Well, I have to say that I am overwhelmed by this response. I truly want to thank each and every one of you for those kind words and thoughts. To me, the work has been what I just do every day. And I'm sure for others that may seem more extraordinary than that, but it's just the way I like to try to tackle life and tackle the job. And I don't see it as a burden at all. So hopefully that has come through, and that the intent is really to demonstrate and to show the respect for the community, for the individual, and that it is indeed individuals that make up a community. I do know that when I first came on board as a co-op student, I immediately was made welcome in the engineering division. The person who hired me, Jack Marr, town engineer at the time, and later to become a select board member for 12 years, a very well-respected individual in town, began the process of mentoring me in the job. And then along with others, I believe in the letter that Kate may have shared with you, the key individuals who helped bring me along in my career, support me through those individual difficult periods when I was working during the day out in the field and spending a lot of nights going to school to finish my degree, working hard to make sure that I didn't give up on the cause. And ultimately, I was able to come through. The Bob Lanigan's, who taught me the ropes of snow and ice operations that I've been working on for years, and then learned on my own the hard way many times with tough situations. And Bob McEwen, who apparently saw something that was worthy of bringing me along and helping me along. There was one individual, not related to the public works field, but who had done a lot of work with Public Works and worked along with your dad, Matt, is Tony Saffalo. He kind of brought the individual homeowner, small business owner perspective to the job. And he, in his very simple Yankee farmer way, as a very practical individual, to describe what it means to a community to have, you know, a good, common sense, sensible approach to things. Jack Marr used to say, remember exactly whose money it is that you're spending. And I've held that to heart for many, many years, as to being really understanding of what the value of what you're doing is and what the value is to the community, but what it actually really costs to do the job. You mentioned, one of you mentioned earlier about having shoes to fill. One individual communicated that to me way back when, you're going to have some tough shoes to fill to fill barbecuing. 37 years as an employee of the Department of Public Works and 26th as Director. And I think I would offer that same sentiment to whoever would follow me. But Tony Saffalo pulled me aside and says, you know, you're going to hear this a lot, you're going to hear people saying you've got some tough shoes to fill, tough shoes to fill. He says, take heed of this. He says, take those shoes, he goes, bronze them, put them on a plaque, and hang them on a wall. Go strap on a new pair of shoes and go blaze a trail. And I've held those two thoughts in mind throughout my entire career. And when I was coming to the point of deciding upon retirement, I would offer that same sentiment to whoever would follow me after 28 years as Director. Thank you all very much. I love you all.
Thank you, Rick. Before, let's all unmute so Rick can hear our applause.
And for that, I'll actually put on my fedora.
Best of luck, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My family came through with the props, I guess.
Our next item, Dr. Gudicant will give us a brief update on the school.
And before Dan starts, I just, I hope the people who are listening to this get some sense of the challenges that the school department and the town staff are going through during this COVID-19 crisis. It is much more complex and challenging than any of us can really grasp. And the confidence that this challenge is being met is inspiring. And I think Dan Gudicant is a good example of remaining calm in a very challenging situation. So Dan, the floor is yours, if you'd like to bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks for that. I'm reminded, though, something that Rick Mercer told me a long time ago, and that is, as you work in Needham, you will find out that everything is a team effort. And this has certainly been an example of that. The schools have been supported, and we have partnered with the town on so many aspects of this, particularly around public health. Shout out to Tiffany Zeig and certainly Tim McDonald and their team. Also, the town manager's office, Kate in particular, Dave Davison. Cindy Gonzalez has really been incredibly helpful in thinking through some communication ideas. So really, thanks to those folks. And a shout out to all of our custodians and maintenance workers, Cecilia Simcheck and Barry Dulong, who are really trying to pull things together for us. There's no question, the town and the schools have been focused in recent months on reopening school. We had to, we've started school, students are engaged remotely. We fully expect to have students return for a new school year in person on Tuesday, the 29th of September, a week from today. That's the plan, and we are moving forward with that plan. Most of the efforts most recently have been on thinking about how we need to recommission our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC systems, making repairs to those systems, particularly around ventilation. The goal has been making sure that our systems function as they were designed, and in several cases, pushing them harder to achieve a standard that is a little higher than some of the systems were frankly designed for. I think about Mitchell and Pollard in particular, but other systems as well. The higher standard is something that we have endeavored to achieve because of a partnership with the Harvard School of Public Health and folks in the Healthy Schools Initiative and Healthy Buildings Initiative. Typically, a classroom, according to national standards, has three air exchanges, an hour of outside or fresh air. What we have aspired to in Needham is four to six exchanges of air. We're doing that because we recognize that the pandemic, this virus, is airborne, it's a respiratory disease, and the focus really has been trying to make sure that our schools are as healthy as they reasonably can. They will not be risk-free. Inevitably, someone will come to school with the disease, and that could impact other students or staff, and we will deal with that. I say that to point out that this will not be a risk-free environment. However, with the collaboration with the town, with our public health partners, and with Harvard School of Public Health, and I need to say, the Needham Education Association, who represent all the bargaining units of the employees who work for the Needham Public Schools, have been amazing partners in trying to help us craft a program to reenter students and staff safely into our schools. So I'm also appreciative beyond our work around ventilation, which has been frankly enormous and significant and ongoing, and will be ongoing as the fall continues into winter, that the town is getting to deploy additional custodial staff in all of our buildings to help keep the schools healthy. And I think really, I just want to thank, in particular Kate and her entire team, for keeping this at the forefront of the agenda with regular meetings, sometimes as in today, for example, meeting twice a day to check up on progress. The focus has been, and Kate has reiterated, we need to open up our schools this fall, we need to open them up safely. And I expect that that will be the case next week with our continued efforts. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing that quick report. I'm happy to respond to any questions that the board may have.
You're on mute. You're muted, Mo.
Mo, you're muted. Any question, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments from members of the board?
You're muted, Mo.
No, you're muted. Any question, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Is that why you were raising your hand, Dan, or to tell me I was muted?
Well, I, I, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the superintendent and through the superintendent, all of the people involved. This is a huge undertaking and, and, you know, kids, I think it's important to get the kids back to school if that can be done safely. I think that's a, you know, something that people want and is a concern townwide, doing a great job and I appreciate everything that's gone into it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else? Matt?
Yeah, and I just want to echo that, you know, as a father of a high schooler, an eighth grader this year, you talk to them and they just want to get back in school and see people. And we had our flag football kickoff over the weekend and to have kids take the field and interact like they have it in, you know, six months was just an amazing sight to see. And I can only imagine it's going to be like that at school. And I just give you a lot of credit and everyone credit for getting it done. So it means so much to the kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else? Mary Ann, do you have anything you want to say?
I don't, other than wishing everybody well. So I know everybody's working hard at getting everything in place and it's a big challenge, a big lift. And I wish for the best for the town.
Thank you. John?
I have the same comment. And Dan, thank you for all you do and, you know, good luck. We're with you as, as we embark on the school year.
Thank you.
And I echo my colleagues' comments and appreciation, Dan, and understanding for the difficulty of what, what is happening. Thank you very, very much for all you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Kate, do you want to say anything on this at all?
No, only that the, we've, we have been working an awful lot on the, on the ventilation systems and in some cases fixing things and in some cases making changes to allow us to circulate more air. And it's just been an enormous learning curve. People are literally working, you know, almost around the clock. They're working double shifts to get this done. And I, I know how much the school community supports them and it's, it's just been a real team effort. So thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it very much. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
The vote.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Bullion moves and Mr. Morelli seconds on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is CPC, Community Preservation Committee warrant article discussion. And joining us will be Peter Pingator, CPC Chair, and Karis Lustig, CPC Liaison. Welcome, Peter, and welcome, Karis.
Thank you.
Peter, the floor is yours.
Well, I went back and looked at my files this afternoon in preparation for this evening's meeting, and I note that I consulted with the select board on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee on March 24th. I think, I don't know that that was a virtual meeting. I think that you were actually in town hall and you were being, you were about a couple of chairs. I think you did every other chair. So a lot has changed and a lot has stayed the same in the last six months. But I'll start by thanking the select board and our staff for keeping us rolling along. And, and I'm really always amazed at the dedication of, of both of you, it's both groups of people. So thank you. We're kind of getting through this together, which is probably the only way we can. So I briefed you on all of the pending articles at that time. I don't know that we have, we have one additional article. I usually start my presentation by talking a little bit about what CPC does, but I don't know that I need to do that tonight. We've had a long meeting already. So if, if I may, I'll, I'll just go through the warrant articles as they appear and I can explain there were some minor changes or maybe significant changes in the amounts and the funding sources that came about as a result of both our public hearing, input from the finance committee, and the deliberations of the committee itself last Wednesday night. So first is Article 10, and that is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I want to thank once again the select board and, and its role as, with the Needham Affordable Housing Trust and Kate Fitzpatrick and the other trustee whose name escapes me. So I apologize, but I know that there's another trustee for bringing this proposal together, putting this together, proposal together very quickly and bringing it before the Community Preservation Committee. We, the original request was for $100,000. And as you know, as we got deeper into the project and based on information that we were provided by the staff, including Katie King, we understood that there were administrative costs involved in the program because the program would be administered by a third party, which would have the expertise in doing things like income verification, something that if we can have a third party do, I would, I would advise, given my prior role as Commissioner of the Needham Housing Authority. So with that in mind, after some discussion with, with our committee and some input from finance committee, the finance committee, we increased the amount of the request from $100,000 to $120,000, the $20,000 being the projected amount of what the administrative cost would be. It's not usually our position as, as a reviewing board to increase amounts. And I would say that we, we took a little, it was, maybe we took some liberty, but we are allowed to do that under the act. And so as a result of that, we increased the request from 100 to 120,000. The caveat is that $20,000 is going to be funded through our, our Community Preservation Fund receipts for this year. And $100,000 will be funded from our community housing restricted funds bucket. I think that's all I have to say on that. It's your, it's your, it's your proposal, so I'm sure you're well informed. Our next item is the appropriation for the First Baptist Church and its preservation and restoration of the front facade. We've, I've met with you, I think, a couple of times about this proposal. And we approved that proposal in the funding amount of $90,020, which is roughly a third of the total project cost. And in fact, it's less than that. It's, the project cost includes a fairly significant contingency, but that was backed out of the calculation. And then the request from the First Parish, excuse me, First Baptist Church was for one third of the projected total project cost. And that item, as I've said, we've had extensive input from the public and from select board in our, in our prior meeting and in consultation with the finance committee. And that was unanimously passed, the recommendation for funding in that amount at our meeting last week. The next item is our First Parish Church steeple preservation. That request initially was for $75,000 of an approximately $100,000 project. First Parish Church, this, this has to do with the restoration of the steeple and essentially the structural aspects of the steeple were taken care of and restored by First Parish about 15 years ago or so. And this request is essentially for the shell of the steeple to replace wooden claverts with Isaac and other long-lasting materials. A lot of the project cost has to do with scaffolding and the materials themselves. There's some painting involved, which I think people may be confused about, not all painting is maintenance. This is actually, this is part of preservation and restoration. And so when they're replaced in stock, they are painting it in, in connection with a restoration or preservation. So the original request, as I said, was for, the project cost was approximately $100,000. The original request was for $75,000. And after some deliberation on the committee's part, we approved the sum of $50,000. Our thinking on that was, of course, I think kind of the principles that we're trying to come up with as we go forward on, on these requests, especially requests from non-government organizations, is to look for a significant investment by the requesting entity and look at the ability to pay and look at other subjective factors, but understanding that these are, these are limited funds, these are taxpayer funds funded by both our property tax surcharge and by estate match. In this case, with respect to First Parish, we were aware of the fact that approximately 15 years ago, First Parish on its own had funded approximately a $3 million renovation of the shell of, of the building.
Peter, I don't know if you can hear me, but you're frozen. Is this one we call Rick Merson?
Peter, if you can hear us, you might try turning your video off. Sometimes that helps, we'll still be able to speak.
Let's give it a couple of minutes. Do we have a way to reach Mr. Pingator? To let him know?
I'm going to guess that he's going, he just disconnected and will be, will come back in. Watch for him.
There he is.
Okay.
Peter, welcome back.
Okay. Did I miss anything?
No, you're the speaker.
The, our next item is the appropriation for the Needham Community Farms Growing Bed Expansion, and that's a sum, that's an amount of $6,200. That amount is going to be used to expand the current growing beds. One thing that I just want to note, just you all are aware of this, but the public should know that they, that the, the produce that's generated through that program is used entirely to support individuals and families in our town that are suffering from food insecurity. There are, and there is a need. So that's, that, that, of course, program was, is supported by CPC and it passed unanimously, and we wish them the best. Our, the next item on it is Article 14, Claxton Field Lights and Skin Diamond Renovation. I think that you're all aware of this, but Claxton Field used to be a, a landfill, part of the town dump. And so it's unstable and settling at all times. There are some safety issues around the infield. And so this proposal is for design funds for the, basically the home plate to the edge of the infield and maybe a little bit beyond, to restore it, stabilize it, and make sure that it's a safe environment for use. In connection with that, there's also going to be, the lights are going to be replaced. And so this amount is for the design of both light, lights, the, the upgrading of the lights and upgrading of the infield area of the field. And that amount is in the requested amount of $101,500. There was on the warrant, and some members of town meeting may be confused about this, but there is Article 15 on the warrant, and that was for defazio tracks aesthetic, track resurfacing. That matter was voted down by the committee with a sense of the, of the committee being that the project was worthy and it needs to be done at some point and perhaps some point soon, but that it was not necessary for us to go through with that project at this time. It essentially, it looked that there was approximately three-year window to get the project done beginning in May of 2019. So we didn't think that there was any sense of urgency. And there were a lot of different reasons why the individuals who voted against it voted as they did. And so I don't really want to, I don't want to really give you one answer for why it didn't pass, but I think that there, I will say that I feel confident in saying that the, the committee had, there's a sense of the committee that they would support the project in the future. And then finally, I think what you'll, you'll note is that our, the appropriation article, Article 16, I'll point out, it's, it has changed over the last six months. Our projected revenues for property taxes are higher and our projected revenue from the state in terms of the state match, we had initially had a projected number of 14% approximately of our prior year's property tax surcharge. We've been informed that the amount is 17.7%. So the total amount of our CPC receipts projected for the period of time from July 1st to June 30th of 2021 is a little over $3.3 million. That is my presentation. If you have questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Pingator. Appreciate the succinct presentation and recognize the hard work that the CPC committee has been doing. Some of these are very challenging issues and you managed to analyze them and bring them to us in a way we can all understand. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Peter Pingator? Mr. Matthews?
Just to thank you and the members of the committee. Again, this is something, it's a volunteer committee, it's got a lot of different kinds of input and responsibilities. Statute is complicated in certain ways and, and you put a lot of thought and care into these recommendations and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody watching who is a town meeting member should be aware that CPC articles are not amendable. They're either up or down at town meeting. So when we come to town meeting on these, it will be an up or down vote. Thank you very much. See you at town meeting. That brings us to a citizen's petition, which we received from Noah Mertz, who was the petitioner. Is Mr. Mertz in the room? Welcome, Noah. Nice to have you here. This is a citizen's petition. You are the originator and therefore the floor is yours to present your petition.
Great. Thank you so much, everybody. I'm wondering also if it would be possible to bring in Rebecca Weber and John Kirk, who are here to help present the petition as well.
If no one objects, does anyone object? Of course, you can bring them in.
Great. Thanks so much.
Is Rebecca in as Ben?
Yes.
Okay. And who is the other person, sir?
John Kirk.
Welcome.
Thank you for figuring out I was Ben. I didn't see where my name was popping up. Thanks for figuring that out.
You're all welcome and please proceed. Noah, the floor is yours.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody. I've been listening to the call for, for a while now. And yeah, just thank you all for, all the work that you are doing, especially in coronavirus times. I know this is just quite, quite a heavy load of stuff to, to have on your plate in addition to all the normal tasks of, of this board. Yeah. John, if you wanted to say something?
Yeah, sure. Well, I, I feel badly that Rick Merson has left. I wanted to say I hope that Warren Street will continue to be high on the list of streets to be plowed as, as we go forward. Rick is really going to be missed. I guess the other thing I just want to quickly say is that we're very interested in, in seeing the next item on the agenda, which is Needham Unites Against Racism initiatives update. And, you know, to thank the town for, and the select board in particular, for efforts on, on that direction. And the citizen's petition that Noah and the team have really put together here is intended to be in support of that effort. We, I think the preference here is that We, I think the preference here is that should it pass as a non-binding resolution, that, that the charge embedded in the petition would be something that the working group that you have established, and congratulations on that group. I, you know, don't know all of them, but I know a lot of them. Great, great people. And you've done a tremendous job recruiting those folks. I know they'll do a great job. And so, you know, the preference would be that that existing group would be, would be the group that would take on some of the elements here or the elements that we're proposing. So I guess we just wanted to, to essentially set the frame that this citizen's petition is designed to support the efforts of the town. It's designed to support the efforts of the Needham Unites Against Racism Initiative. And the purpose is to identify areas that are generally acknowledged as being areas that should be and presumably would be included in the scope. And to put those before town meetings so the town meeting can evaluate those and affirmatively put those forward. So they are also a part of, the town meeting is a part of the process, going beyond the very excellence, four elements of charge that you've put forward and including additional items, which I think are implicit, but called deserve to be called out. And that includes the racism experienced by people in town, discussions with the various committee chairs to understand how their role and area of responsibility is affected by systemic racism, a police oversight and accountability, which of course is a national discussion and one that comes close to home as well. Evaluation of alternative police policies. That's something that is in the, the public discussion and certainly not a, a heavy lift to be considered in any initiative around systemic racism. Racial profiling, public spaces, expansion of the equal justice placards that we've just think are great. And I really appreciate all the support that we've gotten from the town on that. And also housing and zoning policies. You know, these elements are, are, you know, it's not something extraordinary. These elements that we are calling out are also being, turning up in various ways in, in various initiatives within towns across the country and right here in the state. So we have, you know, Wellesley's applied for a grant to fund some of this kind of work. I think Brookline has formed two committees, one on policing practices, the other on reimagining public safety. Amherst has put $80,000 toward a form of equity study that incorporates these elements. So, you know, it does, it feels like a, a natural extension of the work that you folks are doing and in support of that work. And, you know, it's an opportunity for town meeting to weigh in directly as a part of this process. So we see it as a very positive thing and we're very, very hopeful that you folks will see it positively as well. And I think Rebecca had some, some items to add to that.
Yeah, thanks, John. Really just, I think, reiterating some of what you said. We see this non-binding resolution as a way to, you know, number one, just affirm that as town meeting, this, this issue is something that matters to the people of town. And it does seem that there's a lot of, you know, continuing interest by town in examining racism. I mean, there continue to be, you know, there continues to be so much energy in town around this topic. So first, it's really just an opportunity for town to say that. And then secondly, yeah, I would say just, just affirming and adding on to scope of work that is already happening and simply asserting that that scope deserves to be broad and that, you know, long-term, the hope would be that tangible actions come out of all this work that's happening. And just to be clear, the warrant article does not assert any particular action to be taken at all. It simply says that thing, you know, that, that long-term, it would be natural that, you know, we're warranted and appropriate, we would expect that in future, you know, decisions or town meetings that there might be on some of these topics, future decisions to be made or warrant articles that we would see. But I just want to be clear that what's in front of us today has absolutely nothing specific in terms of a policy or an action to be taken.
And, and just to offer a measure of the, the interest in this issue in, among Needham residents, we, we put together this citizen's petition and in three days, we had collected 340 signatures to make sure that it could meet that 100 signature threshold to be included in the warrant. And we just saw people all around town coming forward and, you know, with proper COVID precautions, but like really excited about this, you know, people who aren't necessarily on town meeting. But, but this is sort of, this is a point of, of interest, not just for town meeting members, but for everyone town meeting members represent. And people are really paying attention to this issue, which for me is really heartening. And I grew up here and I, I feel like this is a really long overdue conversation. And, and I'm, I'm really psyched to see that, that people in town are, are looking to, to take, to, to take this work on and be a part of it too.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And, you know, I think we all share your concern with respect to the issue of racism and social equity in our town and all of the implications of that. So, and that's in large measure why we've done the Nuari effort and why we chose the people we did to serve on that, because we want them to make meaningful suggestions and help us. Anybody from the board have any comments or questions? Thank you very much for coming in.
I think Matt Borelli had a question.
Oh, Matt, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Matt.
Thank you. And, you know, I was just looking over, you know, the, the article, obviously, and the website. And I guess I'll say, we all agree that racism is an issue with society, society in general. And, you know, we talked about Nuari, I'm a sitting member on Nuari as well as Mary Ann. And we have a meeting next month and the idea is to really get people from all areas to discuss race and racism. I think in this article, my issue is how broad it is. In other words, it talks about racism, which I think there's a lot of common ground on. And I do wish you would let us finish, sort of get started on some of that work. We've asked a lot of citizens petitioners to postpone theirs until the spring because, and they have because of this town meeting and, you know, everything going on. And I feel like we have a foothold that we're going to explore the issues of race in Needham. And then if that wasn't satisfactory, maybe something could come back. But the, the second prong of this, which is the policing issue, I think is a much more difficult issue and something I think where the town has supported the police department. It's a safe town, a safe community because of the police department and a very professional community because of the police department. So I think when we conflate those issues is where there are going to be more issues that come up as far as what the intent of this article is. Is it to try to, and I read something about having the officer in schools to try to maybe remove that officer from the schools. Where is this going? So my concern is that the part in the policing, I don't agree with, and I don't agree with the language. The housing and the zoning issues, I don't necessarily agree with. I think there might be strides that we do with the planning board to make progress on some areas of maybe more multifamily housing. But that's another discussion. So I guess my point is to try to, if you want to keep it simple and say, okay, this is like, Nuari is a race initiative. I think that would be a better tack than lumping a lot of issues in where I don't believe there's broad support for it. So that's just me speaking from this chair. I know we're going to be discussing this, Mr. Chairman, voting it another day, I'm assuming.
I think we will not take a position on this tonight, given some of the questions that have come up over the last couple of weeks. But ultimately, before town meeting, we will obviously take a position.
Right. And I would like to see it. And I know we've done it with others and I, you know, other citizens petition. It postponed until we actually have a chance to have a group meet about these discussions and, and come up with what the problem actually is instead of what we think the solutions might be. On, some of these are national issues and my interest here is Needham issues. And I think we do, I think we're in agreement. We have a group together that is going to be a great group to discuss these issues. So that's what I'll say.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Matthews? And then I'll let John address that. Why don't we let John address that and then Dan? Go ahead, John.
I, I just had a question. Matt, can you, in terms of these concerns, can you point to language in the article that you're concerned with?
I can get to that language. I will say, for example, in the original draft of the article, it did talk about the officers in the schools. And then it says systemic racism is part of our Needham's housing and zoning policies. I don't agree with that. And then just the overall arching theme of policing. And I was able to look at your website and, and discussions you've had and interviews. And I think there is a push to do different funding for the police as far as budgetary funding. And maybe you can speak to that as things go further. I do not have any interest, I think, in cutting the budget for the police department or, you know, trying to, as was discussed at last town meeting, you know, taking weapons from the police department or any of that nature. I think we have a professional department. And I think that when we get into the question of policing, like I said in this article, that's when you're going to get fract, you know, it's kind of fractured. Because I know many people I talked to are happy and satisfied and find that our police department is one of the role model in communities around us. On a national level, it may be different. But I'm talking about Needham-centric issues. And if you look at the draft in the petition, it has some things in there that, you know, spoke to that.
I will note that we have engaged a professional analyst with a lot of experience to look at all of the policing issues that are, are coming up in this discussion. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah. And I don't, I think we've heard, gotten some information this evening and it makes sense to wait till a later meeting to make a decision about the board's recommendation. But you've put a lot of work into this. So I wanted to offer, offer some, a couple of thoughts. I, I agree, we have a lot of work to do on race equity. And, and race equity is a core piece of the work of this board. And even more so since the events of this summer. And, and I agree, I think it's clear that there's genuine interest in this town nationally, that although a lot of progress is made, been made, not nearly enough. And this is a good time to do a lot more. And I hope that's, that we can, this is going to go on for a long time. And I hope that we can, that can, that understanding, even if we disagree about other things, will, will help us. The, the, the resolution has a lot of, a lot of detail into it, which would, is, is difficult to discuss and parse on, on town meeting floor in any case, much less under the, under the rules of engagement that we'll have for this year. For me, there are parts of it that I, I agree with. There's some other things that I look at somewhat differently and others that are concerned. I think specifically, and Matt talked about law enforcement. I think most people in town want to improve and generally want to improve public safety. And, and we had to be open to talking about that. And we're watching some things that are really horrific that have happened in other parts of the country. And we want to make sure that we make whatever improvements we need to make, we need to make here. But most people want improved public services and public safety, not, not to reduce them. And, and I, I'm not willing to marginalize the people who work for this town in the discussion, including the people that work for the police department. And I hope that it is not the intent of the petitioners to do that. But there is a lot of work to be done. And I don't think, and although we're anxious to move quickly, even as we move quickly, we're going to have a lot of work to do going forward. And, and, and if, if we're better a year from now than we are now, and if we are better five years from, from, from where we are a year from now, that, that'll be good. But it's patience and persistence, I think, that will, that will see us through. But the basic principle is that this is a time for real progress on racial justice and equity. We should be able to achieve that both nationally and here in Needham. Thank you, Chairman.
Now, I know Rebecca Weber wanted to speak, so I want to give you a chance to talk, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mo. I just want to say, first of all, Dan, I think, very much feel the same spirit of what you were articulating. And I think that's the spirit in which this was written, which is just to paraphrase you. Like this is, this is the time to take, take a look around, to be reflective, to think about what kind of oversight we have. And I think that's, that's very much the spirit in which we wrote this, which is, this is, this is the time where we can, we can do that, right? We can have that, that sort of reflection. I, I want to say specifically on the language around policing, and I just pulled it up to take a look at it. We did, the goal was, and I'm, and I'm reading what we have, is that things like policies and practices may require revision and clarification, is, is what the current draft says. With, with again, the understanding that we're not trying to say, we're not trying to say everything is wrong. Everything is terrible. Throw everything out. That is not what we're trying to say. We're trying to say that, very similar to what you're saying in terms of the individual that you've hired to take a look at our policies and procedures. And to, again, this is an opportunity to, to say, hmm, like, is it, is it everything we want it to be? Not that we're saying, where are there opportunities? Where are there opportunities to move in the right direction? And in a data-driven kind of way and specific to Needham, not in a need your kind of way, but looking specifically at Needham's policies, Needham's procedures, Needham's data. Where are there opportunities for us to get better? And that's why the language is written in the way that it is with the goal of saying, where might there be opportunities? Let's go find them and then specifically solve for Needham's opportunities.
Thank you. That's a very helpful clarification. Mr. John Boy.
Thank you. And thank you, Rebecca, for that statement. Okay, that's, that was great. And, and I want to, I want to say, I agree with most of what Dan said. And there are elements of this, that, of your petition that, that I favor. And there are elements of it that I don't. And there are elements of it that I'm not sure of. And I think it, for me, it requires, I think that I would have, I would have liked to have seen some outreach, you know, with the, the, the core organizers who wrote the petition to sort of have conversations with members of the board, not to make a determination as to how to write it, but to give you information from our perspective and get an understanding and maybe a meeting of the minds. One of the things that I don't know what it, what it entails is your housing and zoning. What I will say, and I will say, you know, speak to John on this, because you've been involved in town meeting and in the town for many years, you know the work that we've done with getting to 13.6% on our SHI count. And that through the actions of this board and the planning board and other stakeholders, including town meeting, we have brought in, I believe, over the past 10 years, possibly as much as a 20% increase in our population, for which we have not fully digested yet. So the concern that I have, there wasn't any explanation under that, that, that item, housing and zoning. So I have no idea what it, what it entails, other than I, I think of what, you know, what Newton is looking at, which might be within a certain radius of T-stations, multifamily housing. But I think one of the things that we need to look at right now, and I think we all know, because it was addressed throughout this meeting, we're in a pandemic. We are in a budgetary We are in a budgetary downswing from a revenue standpoint for this fiscal year and next, next fiscal year. I don't know about the fiscal year beyond that, which would be FY 2023. But I think that we are a community where the residents of the community expect a certain level of services to be provided. That includes DPW, that includes public safety, that includes education. And right now, I think all of us can look inwardly and say, education is, it's an unknown for this school year. And, and, you know, for those, I, for those folks in this meeting or that are watching, that have kids in the schools, I understand the concerns that you have. I'm not living it. My kids are grown and, and, and beyond school age. As a matter of fact, Noah, I think one of my sons graduated with you.
2013?
2013. That would be Jake.
Good thing you remembered his name, John.
Oh, okay. And, oh, I really, yeah, good thing I remembered his name. So, you know, I think that I would like to get more understanding about the backstory and your petition with respect to all of the elements of it. And I know that you'll do a video, and I know that we'll hear more at town meeting. I think that as I've, you know, but I just don't, don't have enough information with which to make a position as of this moment. I'm pleased about the NUIRI process that has been started. I'm pleased to hear that you are supportive of that. All we want to do is do our best for the people of this town. And you know that, we're all here together. So, and, but we are in a different time. This is a really different time. So it's going to drive a lot of how, how the process works. Rebecca, I'm glad that I heard, you know, this is a long term. I'd like to think it's a medium term, at least for some of the elements of the, you know, of what we're discussing. I don't know the answer to racism. There isn't, but I, what I do know is there isn't a switch that can be turned off. And if there were, we would find it and do it. But it's not that easy. This is a very, very difficult challenge we have. But we're all people of, of approaching this and that's the goal in this process. So I'm going to leave it at that. I would love to speak with you individually, which we will do, just to get a better understanding. So, thank you.
I think I would like to just say that NUIRI is an effort organized by the town. That doesn't preclude citizens from tackling individual problems that they see, coming up with proposals to deal with them. We are not the monopoly of good solutions. But we do have to make sure that the the town functions and that these things are all balanced. But that does not preclude private efforts to try to help eliminate racism. And those are happening, obviously. The citizens' petition is a reflection of that. Mary Ann?
I'll speak, but I know Noah wanted to speak, so I would, Noah's first.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to reply to John. Thank you for that comment. I just wanted to give you a little more context, I guess, on, on what our approach was, specifically with like the housing and zoning. Again, our, our intent was not to be prescriptive. We, we didn't want to like determine the, the results of any of the investigation and the research ahead of time. So, so we, we put that in the list as a suggestion of a place where we already are, where we already are looking into as, as a part of the, you know, racism as it functions systemically is, is very complicated and nuanced. And how, how that is expressed and how that is instantiated in housing and zoning, both policy and de facto reality, is both something that is like way bigger than Needham, but also is, is a thing in Needham. So it's something that we do need to, it, it definitely belongs on that list of these sort of complicated, interlocking pieces to this manifold issue. And so, yeah, so we, that, I hope explains a little bit of the vagueness, because we, we don't know without looking into it. But, but it does bear looking into. And also, yeah, I, I would be happy to talk with you more. We would be happy to talk more about like other things that we're going, that, that are going on, you know, equal justice in Needham is, is working on a lot of these issues independently. So like you were saying, Mo, that's really great to hear. We're really happy to hear that. Yeah, that there's like excitement and, and space for, for more, as many people as are putting in the work as volunteers to, to just like get the brain trust cooking and, and come up with ideas for ways to, to make this town more welcoming and, and a home for people of all identities. I think we're all united in that as our like overarching aim.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
So I think, you know, the town had started down the path with NUIRI much earlier this year, I think earlier than, certainly I was aware that EJN existed. And we worked in creating NUIRI with the existing groups that existed in town that had been focused on equal justice and on considering and working for these issues, which is why they are included as part of the committee. I do think it's possible for all of us to believe and to be committed to understanding that Black Lives Matter and that our police serve Needham with good intent. That doesn't mean they're perfect. That doesn't mean there's not things we can learn. That's certainly why the select board has asked for a study to understand what those things are and so that we can get some data, learn and figure out how we can move forward. And that's just one of a number of issues that the group will be looking at as part of the overall charge. So, so I appreciate, you know, that you are here now to join the fight of so many others in town who have been committed to this. And I know that, you know, I don't think any of you are actually new to this fight. It's just sort of this particular group that's new within town. And I think you know as well, this is not something that you can change by fiat. It, it's a long embedded problem. It's not solely within the domain of the town. It's within the domain of our citizens and it is going to require lots of education and understanding and hearts and minds over a period of time, over people learning. So I'm hoping that we'll all be open to learning together in ways that can help us understand where we're going forward. It's work that I look forward to, and thank you for joining the fight.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann. I thought that was very well said. Matt?
Chair, thank you. And just to answer your question, I did look up the executive summary and two issues that I have. And that's why, you know, we call it a non-binding resolution, but there's obviously some intent going forward. So it says at the regular town meeting in spring 2021, we're going forward to propose and/or adopt proposed policy and budgetary changes to dismantle systemic racism and prove the quality of life. So you don't have to answer this today, but I'm wondering what those proposed policy, what you're thinking of the policy and budgetary changes. And then second, it says we also, we all know that racism exists in the structure of our system, often as holdovers from previously explicitly racist policy. This looks like single-family zoning, MECO program, school resource officers in schools, enforced compliance method of policing, an overly authoritative housing authority and more. So I think when you have conclusions like that, that school resource officers in school are, you know, systemic racism, single-family housing, overly authoritative housing authority, I think that's when you start getting into more inflammatory argumentative discussion than saying, what can we do as a community to actually help with racism and have a small objective instead of this overarching?
I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer that for you, Matt. So there's a couple of things here. First of all, what we're saying is that there's an existing committee in the NUIRI. And it's, we're asking that committee, frankly, based on Mary Ann's comments, to do explicitly, to do what you're doing already, which is to look at policing. I think you referenced that as being within the charge, presumably looking at the effects of racism on people in town is within the charge. So all these items are is simply to lay out what we hope will be included in the work of NUIRI. That's the purpose of the warrant article. There's other work that's being done. And that work is advocacy work. It's work around raising awareness of systemic racism. And that work in, is fairly broad in its scope. That's work for equal justice Needham, but that is separate from the citizens' petition. The citizens' petition was signed by 340 people in town. They're not necessarily part of equal justice in Needham, although many of them are. The part, the purpose of the warrant article is very limited and direct. And that is for the, you folks, Matt and Mary Ann, committing your personal time, you know, unpaid, I assume, to do this very hard work. And we're giving direction in terms of items that, you know, this group feels are appropriate to be included in that work. So that's, that's, that's a distinction. Now, I'm going to give you something. I'm not saying that this is where we're going from a budgetary standpoint, but we spend $7.4 million a year, that's independent of the new building for fire and police that is being funded and substantial investment on the part of the town, and appropriately so. But we spend on an annual budget like, based on last year, 7.4 million on police. Health and Human Services is 2.3 million. The vast majority of the problems that we have in this town are related to mental health, substance abuse, domestic abuse, and the interacting issues associated with that. There's an imbalance there in terms of the level of funding. Now, is 7.4 too much? Probably not. But is 2.3 too little? And is Health and Human Services the right group? And is that the complete bucket to be looked at? Those are the kind of questions that perhaps we'll get to in subsequent town meetings. But that is far beyond the scope of this citizens' petition. The citizens' petition is very narrow. It is non-prescriptive. It's also non-binding. All it does is ask the NUIRI to include these elements in your work. It's designed for a yes. And by the way, Matt, you may be quite right. And it would be a wonderful thing if so, that an examination of the police under the NUIRI comes back and says, we have the best police department in the country. And nominously, there's no racism having any kind here. Or something that, you know, on the edges, there are some things that we can improve. That's, the answer could be yes and all. Our zoning is not influenced by racism at all and has no impact or participating in systemic racism. The answer could be, we've looked at it, there's no issue. There's nothing prospective, uh, prescriptive in this at all. All it asks is that these issues be included in the examination.
Okay, and I'll just close with this, Mr. Chair. I will say the executive summary I read was for the petition. So that language was what was summarizing the petition. But I understand there are other groups like equal justice Needham has, you know, doing their own work as well. I will ask though, you know, we've had with other citizens' petitions, and would you be willing, because it's loud and clear what you're looking for NUIRI to do? NUIRI can take that under advisement. Would you be willing to postpone this until the spring and let NUIRI do their work based on some of that input from the signed petition?
Matt, I'm sorry, I'm not sure we're looking at the same version. I, I just want to say, I think, I, I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing, because I'm not seeing that language that you're mentioning in the final version. So I just
It's in your executive summary link.
Yeah, that's an executive summary language that is available on the website. That's a separate, that's a separate document. That's an advocacy document. It's designed to raise awareness. Now, there's advocacy associated with, with that, but that's separate from the citizens' petition. Citizens' petition does not contain any of that language.
No.
It is designed specifically, and there's no vote on whether, on the elements that exist in a, in the executive summary that, that is an advocacy piece on equal justice Needham. Those are two separate things entirely, Matt.
It's attached to the petition and it says, fall 2020 warrant article, citizen petition, racism happens here, executive summary, exactly what I quoted. The article is attached to it, and I know that was amended by our, you know, we put in that, you know, we put in the new petition in, in the warrant. But I'm talking about the original intent of this has that in the executive summary. And I don't want to go back, I'm just saying that that went to be an issue. And the question I had was, is there some way that you would say, here's our suggestion, these are well-founded ideas, would like NUIRI to, to look into them, will be in the audience as you look into them, we'll put this off until the spring. And then with that, you're not the only citizens' petition we've asked. We've asked three others who have obliged. I'm just wondering if that is an option for this petition, instead of going to town meeting, giving it some time as a board in NUIRI to look at?
And before you answer, before you answer, John, this is going to be the final comment, because we don't want to have this into a running debate. And before you answer, let me also say that in dealing with racism, I think we've all come to learn that until we have a common understanding of a lot of the issues that people experience, we're going to be talking past each other. So we need to get to a place where we can hear each other and understand where people are coming from, to make sure that we can communicate effectively. So now I'd ask you to answer Matt's question, which I think is a fair question. And then we can move on to the other items on our agenda.
Well, I don't think the three of us are in a position to make a commitment on behalf of the 340 folks who wanted to see this voted on at town meeting.
No, you don't have to answer that tonight. He's just posing a question that you might want to think about before town.
And I think we certainly can. I guess the, the, the question back from my point of view is, there are, and this is just speaking for myself, there are very reasonable requests to include within the scope of NUIRI's work. That's all this is really about. And the expectation and the hope would be that we could all come together and say, yes, these elements belong in NUIRI's work, and it would be a very quick discussion. We don't see it as something that should take up a lot of town meeting's time. It seems, it's a non-binding resolution, that there's a little motherhood and apple pie here from our point of view. And, you know, this sort of scopes out your work in a way that doesn't sound like it's far afield from what you're working on already. So anyway, I think that's the, that's the basic response.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in. Appreciate hearing the presentation. And more later.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you very much. Rebecca?
Thanks.
John? Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is NUIRI. And this is part of the town manager section of our agenda. So Kate, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, just to let you know, we have scheduled a meeting of the NUIRI Working Group for middle of October. We've scheduled that out. And Katie King has a brief update on the lived experience that we wanted to share for you.
What, what date is that, Kate?
October 20th, 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly, I spoke to Dr. Nicole Argo Ben Eetzak about the Live Experiences project and where they are at. They're just finalizing their first report. They got 93 stories since July, about a third of those from a survey from the high school. So they're going to be coming to present to you at one of your October meetings. And they'll summarize the data in an anonymous and aggregated way, share who's submitting stories, what they're about, and some suggestions for how those types of incidents of discrimination or hate could be addressed in the future. So again, it's, you know, the data's not a representative sample or a large survey across all of Needham, but it's an important voice. And so we will add them to one of your upcoming agendas.
Thank you. Any, Kate, do you have anything else on this particular item?
Not tonight.
Okay, so then let's move on to positions.
Mo, can I just?
Of course.
I didn't get to chance to go back and check. Did we get a chance to be, to get the charge and the committee membership online on the website?
Yes.
So I just did want to let the public know, in case people missed, who's on the committee last week, that there is a NUIRI page on the website and that that information is available publicly to the town, from the town website. And, you know, I know we look forward to hearing the report from the Live Experiences group. So I'm glad that, that they're readying their first report and that it will be ready to come back.
Thank you.
The NUIRI page is right on the front page of the website.
Thank you. All right. So that brings us to the special town meeting warrant articles.
Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Matthews had his hand up.
Oh, thank you for noticing that. Dan?
I was just going to say, I, I know that it is a large committee, and it's in the nature of a committee where you get a lot of good people, that a lot of them are really busy and it's hard to schedule meetings and so on. But I hope that there is a sense of urgency to everything in spite of all of the difficulties that we're working with, to try to get the committee to establish a regular schedule. that we're working with to try to get committee to establish a regular schedule early and, and stick to it over time. I think that will really pay dividends. I know you're, you're all working really hard on that. So to a certain extent, there's no reason for me to say this. Just thought I would because it's something that people care about. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Now, lest I miss anybody else's raised hand, is there anybody who wants to say anything more on this matter? Okay, that brings us to the special meeting, town meeting positions on warrant articles. And.
Mr. Chair, if I might, we would like to talk first about articles one and three. And for a variety of reasons, we are recommending that the board withdraw these articles to a later date. We did confer with the chair of the school committee and finance committee. And I believe there's understanding and agreement on why this might be so. But I would call on Dave Davidson to outline for you some of the reasons why we think it's not timely at this point to move them forward.
Dave, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason that we are recommending to the board to withdraw the two articles is the level of uncertainty, particularly in terms of the funding sources. You've heard from the superintendent earlier this evening relative to the school department and its actions that it's taken, which has also involved the town in terms of addressing the facilities in preparation for opening the schools, but also the ongoing activities that will go on throughout the school year. There are many assumptions in terms of what the cost will be with, with doing the preventive services and the actions that both the town and the school will need to take in order to provide education during this school year. However, there is also sources of funding that is coming from the federal government and from the state government to which there is a moving target. There are some programs that are reimbursing cities and towns' school districts 25 cents on the dollar. There is others that are reimbursing at 75 cents on the dollar. And then there are sources that are reimbursing the town dollar for dollar. The interpretation of expenses has been changing over the last several months. And each community is having to deal with addressing its community COVID response as well as its education COVID response. And as the board is aware from Representative Garlic and the rest of our legislative delegation is that they're hearing our needs, the needs of the cities and towns and the school districts of the Commonwealth, that we need greater flexibility in terms of the funding that's being made available to helps, to help us to address those added costs. We also are working to try to self-fund many of the costs. And we have been doing that using existing resources and reprioritizing our dollar use. We also know that the state budget for 2021 hasn't passed yet. We also know that the legislature is still dealing with closing fiscal 2020. The actions or inaction that may happen in any of those items will impact the town, impact the school district. And we think that we will be in a, in a better position to explain and a better understanding of what the total cost is and what costs we're not being able to address, that we could not address, will be in a better position to tell that story in May at the May town meeting. And the other point that I would leave the board with is that if there is an unexpected expense that needs to be addressed immediately because there are not resources to do that, that there is a reserve fund that is appropriated annually with the operating budget. And it indeed would have been one of the funding sources if we had moved forward with the COVID-19 funding article. And therefore, that gives us a better assurance that we can address immediate issues and we'll be able to tell town meeting in a much more concrete and factual matter what costs the town could not cover with existing resources.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, I mean, these costs are very real. The, on the town side, where we talked about retrocommissioning and ventilation, enhanced cleaning, public health resources, PPE. On the school side, the schools have taken some extraordinary measures to try to lower costs within their budget to fund many expenses related to PPE, substitute teachers for teachers on leave. And I think the most expensive item on their plate, which is the establishment of this remote academy, which is required by the Commonwealth for the 600 students who've opted not to come back into school, the schoolhouse this year. So what we would propose is to have regular updates monthly with the board and the finance committee on, on the progress of these expenses. The, the swings could be greatly varied. One of the, you know, the, the state budget alone could have a material impact on, on the, on the, on these costs. So we do think that the story right now is not as clear as we would like to bring to town meeting. But we do also propose that if the board were to withdraw the articles, that we prepare a memo to town meeting explaining what we expect to happen, but why we're proposing to withdraw so that there isn't the impression that the costs have gone away in this, in this proposal for the October 4th.
Well, speaking for myself, Kate, I think that makes a lot of sense, given the current situation. And they need to be clear at a town meeting on what the actual ask is. Is there any questions or comments before we ask for a motion to withdraw? Hearing none, we ask for a motion. Mr. Bullion.
Chairman, I would move that the board votes to withdraw articles one and articles three.
So a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motions? No, the motion. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. So those are recommended for withdrawal and those will be withdrawn. That brings us to article 10.
Mr. Chair, I would ask the board to consider an amendment to article nine. After consultation with the finance committee last Wednesday, the PPBC has voted to seek rescission of 10 million, not 9 million. So that would require approval of a motion to amend, since this is a select board article, to amend the some 9 million to change it to 10 million.
Does anyone have any questions with respect to the change in the amount? Or any other matter bearing on a potential motion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board amend article nine from 9 million to rescind 10 million.
Second.
As a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we come to the motion. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. So we will have that amended. That brings us now to article 10, Kate?
Yes.
Um.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. That brings us to article 11. Is there a motion? Is there any discussion? Mr. Borelli?
We recommend adoption.
Is there a second? There is a motion, the second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. That brings us to article 11.
12.
Whoops, just did 11. Okay, sorry. Article 12 is moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. That brings us to 13.
We recommend adoption.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Article 14.
We recommend adoption.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussions? Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Article 15 has been withdrawn, is that correct?
Correct.
Will be, all right. That brings us to the appropriation for a community preservation fund, article 16.
Recommended adoption, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Matthews?
I just did one question that I should know the answer to, but does the number, do the numbers in article 16 reflect any adjustments due to the withdrawal of article 15, which had been spent or expensed earlier?
Yes, as well as the increase to the ERAP and the reduction in the first parish.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question, Dan. Any other questions? Come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. That brings us to the citizens petition. I gather from the discussion this evening that we, do we have a, a motion or, or a position on this?
Not ready.
Not yet.
Not ready. We will respect the members' statement that we're not ready. So let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the, to extend the authorization for local outdoor dining of alcoholic licensing, approval and fee waivers, Kate?
Mr. Chair, Governor Baker recently extended the period by which outdoor dining could be authorized. And the board's vote on June 9th authorized me to grant the approvals necessary to expedite any outdoor dining opportunities that our restaurants were running through our working group on economic development. And so that expired, that vote of the board expired on, would expire on November 1st. And we're asking that the board extend that authorization through December 1st. The governor's authorization is actually longer, but we don't believe that here in town that past December 1st, that would be a likely option. But a, a complimentary recommendation is also to consider waiving the fees associated with the permitting of outside heaters. Because if, if our restaurants are going to seek permits, we thought it would be a reasonable way to try to keep them afloat by the small gesture of waiving the fees for those.
Thank you, Kate. I would say that the committee under Mary Ann Cooley's leadership with respect to keeping the restaurants and the businesses in town going has been very effective. And you, the fact that you have that authority has been a great boon to that work. I would recommend a motion that would reflect what you've just said.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board vote to extend the date authorizing the town manager to grant local outside dining with alcohol to December 1st, 2020, and vote to waive the fees associated with the permitting of outside heaters.
Thank you, Mr. Bullion. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Mr. Bullion?
Yeah, just one discussion point. The outside heaters, you know, some of the restaurants I, I know are, would like to have side flaps and heaters inside. Hopefully, we're, you know, that, that the fire department is looking at this for the purpose of safety. It has to be. So I, I'm going to leave that to you, Kate, and, or if you have any information already.
I did speak to the fire chief about that today. There are other minds on this call who know a lot more than I do, but I do know that side flaps on tents make them buildings and they are no longer eligible. And the chief opines that a heater inside an outdoor tent becomes a very different thing than an outside seating and would require significant more permitting than fire department permitting. So we are.
Thank you.
Don't envision that. And I believe Sandy, Mr. Chair, may have a comment on that.
Yes, we need energy expectations on that. Sandy, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to state that the fire chief has already provided a list of regulations for heaters that we will discuss at our meeting tomorrow morning.
And I'd also like to recognize the fact that Sandy is the point person for this entire effort. She's the contact person for these businesses and restaurants. And she's done a stellar job with it. I want to thank you. Mary Ann?
So, and I did just want to say, I know that Kate acknowledged that the state extension goes past December 1st. December 1st is the state, is the, the date that's selected for this. The committee will be talking about and understanding what the issues would be if we were to extend it longer. And we'll take all those issues under advisement and consider what that might be or not be. So it's a long time between now and next spring, so.
Thank you. That brings us to the vote unless there was any other comment or question. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
John?
Bullion? Yes.
Mr. Matthews? You're unmuted. Yeah. The chair votes yes. I'm not the only one who mutes. Thank you. That, it makes it unanimous. And then that brings us to the last item in that report, which is free 24, free 22-hour downtown parking authorization.
So, Mr. Chair, we are seeking the board's approval for free two-hour meter parking in the business districts. The board in June authorized free parking through Labor Day. Maybe we were hoping things would be different after Labor Day. But we are, we are doing this, making this recommendation to you really to help the businesses and make it known that we're doing, that we're welcoming customers. We are, we have heard, and Amy, who you, you talked to a couple hours ago at this point, has canvassed a lot of businesses and they, they're very supportive of the idea as long as it's partnered with some enforcement on the two-hour limit. Though, even though it used to be people parked at meters and took the train, that's not happening as much now, but there is, there are incidents of all-day parking. So I have had a conversation with Chief Schiller and he has assured me that he'll be able to do some periodic testing of the two-hour limit. So we do recommend that the board extend the free two-hour metered parking through the end of calendar 2020, in fact, through January 4th, the next business day after the holiday.
Yes, and speaking of myself, I think the key to this is making sure that we're adequately enforcing it so people do respect it.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board vote to allow for the, for free two-hour metered parking through January 4th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. Kate, you have more in your report?
Just a few. To continue the economic development theme, Katie did yeoman's work putting together a grant application for the state for just about $60,000 that if awarded, we could purchase some more, some patio heaters, concrete barriers, radar signs, things that might help in the outdoor dining or even retail options in the business district. So we did apply the last time and we didn't receive the grant. So we're hoping that we maybe receive it this time and just that we could purchase some of these items and then continue to lend them out to businesses as, as needed. So thank you to Katie and we'll really thank you if we get the money. The second one is the, I think Amy touched on it briefly, but the, some of our new banners went out on Chapel Street this week, or actually at the end of last week, about, you know, shopping local, but also. shopping local but also wearing a mask. Mask wearing continues to be something that we hear a lot about from the public, and we're just trying to remind folks, keep safe and shop local. The diner on Needham, by all accounts, was a big success last week. We had great weather, and we have one more event scheduled for October 14, so look forward to that. And finally, just an item that the board approved on your consent agenda, that the League of Women Voters from October 16 to the 30th will be, has donated to us so that we can display an art installation on the Common, and it is a series of sort of art displays with information on them commemorating the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, providing women suffrage. And I think that, given all the activity on the Common, this is the year maybe people will actually, even more people will see, because there are a lot of people are out there on a daily basis. So that's something exciting, and thank you for accepting that gift so that the town can now put that out at the, at the donation of the League of Women Voters.
Thank you very much, Kate. Matt?
Question on the Common as far as the tent is concerned, because I've been asked on, is that going to remain indefinitely through the winter? Is that the idea, or is there a stop theory that we have currently for that? Take that down.
The tent is here through November 1. If we choose to extend it, we may look at, there might be procurement issues with it going over $10,000, but I'm certain that we would be able to extend it.
So maybe that's a question for the group.
Yeah. It's one of the things that they would be talking about.
Thank you.
I would, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
One of the things that the Chair and I are sitting on the committee on the redesign of the Common, which will be coming to this board in the next month or so, and one of the items that was an absolute was the ability to put up a tent, because it's been so popular, we want to be able to retain that in the future.
Thank you, Kate. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Are there any committee reports? Hearing none, then we come to a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Brilliantly put, Mr. Borelli. Is there a second? Mr. Bullion, seconds. Come to the vote. Any discussion on the motion? Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Mo votes, yes. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you very much.